Thanks.
Hello. Okay, welcome to our school board meeting, the HUSD school board meeting for April 19th. My name is Ashley Woods, I'm the board chair and we are kind of on a this evening, get our board out, so I'm calling so far. Okay, how's that? Okay. The first piece of any meeting is public comment, so if you have signed and you would like to make a public comment, please come up to this microphone. If you're online and you want to, and you want to make a public comment, please raise your virtual hand.
Hello, my name is Tori Terravella and I am from Waterbury. I wanted to take the time to talk to you about my friend Pam Eaton, as I was not able to earlier. Pam was one of the first people to welcome me into the Vermont legal community when I moved here in 2019. At that time, she provided me with valuable advice and information as I was looking for a job and trying to decide what area I wanted to practice. She continued to keep in touch with me over the years, offering me advice on tricky cases, introducing, introducing me to members of the, of the bar, and just generally making sure I was happy with where I was in my profession. She has diligently served on the board of the Young Lawyers Division, and I know she would be an asset to this board as well. She is kind, a good listener, intelligent, and extremely motivated. She's also well-connected within the Waterbury community in her own right, as well as through her mother who served as Rotary President two, two years before me. I am honored to know Pam Eaton and would be happy to have her representing me on this board. Thanks.
Thank you, Tori. Do you see any public comment people, Mike? Okay, so I sorry. This year is a little different than last year as we have, last year we had the exact same number of spaces as we had applicants. This year it's a little different, we have three applicants and two spaces for the Waterbury seats. So I have written out the instructions carefully, so I can keep up with it. So the first round thing is we're going to interview each of you. Some of you we know, some of you we don't, and you'll come up and talk just similarly to your experience at the select board. Currently, the, we have one applicant luckily from Duxbury, Emily Doloff, who's, we're going to nominate, will do her pieces last. But the Waterbury Select Board has recommended our former board members, Dan Rossioli and Elizabeth Brown, to come back, that was their recommendation. But we're gonna, the way it works is we're going to make one nomination at a time, and we're going to vote on it. We'll start with one of the seats, I'll read them out. If you want to make a nomination for somebody, you need to raise your hand, and then we'll proceed with a discussion and then voting. So first things first, Dan or Elizabeth or Pam, would any of you like to start and be the first person to come up and address the board? Dan, get up here, come on.
Okay, in a way of quick introductions, I know most of you, but I've been in Waterbury for 20 years, I have four kids from nine to 19 in various stages of the school system, one at Brookside, one at Cross at Brook, and the two older ones have now left Harwood. I served last year in the school board, learned a ton. Learned a lot that I had no information or no realization on how deep and complicated certain areas get. And so I enjoyed kind of delving into those and Lisa was awesome working with me and helping me understand so many of the financial pieces of it. I think there's a lot of opportunity this year. Now that we're sort of out of budget crisis, although there'll still be budget pressure, but I think we can start looking maybe a little bit long-term and more strategic than we were in the past year. And so, you know my style, I like to ask questions. I don't come with all the answers, but however I can help, I'm glad to help out. So glad to take questions.
Any questions? Ellie.
You guys, I'm so sorry. What is one unique thing from your community that you feel like you can bring to the school board?
Interesting question. Okay, one piece that I think is different coming from the Waterbury side than the Valley side, just to compare the two, is that Waterbury and Duxbury went through a consolidation process a generation ago. And so I think it brings a slightly different perspective to a lot of the concerns that some of the towns will have about what may be hot topics in the next year or two. Things like consolidation opportunities and that type of stuff. Does that answer your question?
Uh, Elizabeth?
Good to see you all, thanks for having me back to speak with you. So I'm, I think you had circulated the letter that was submitted to everybody, okay. So the reason why I hadn't run, obviously in January, I had let you know that I had taken another position. I was actually juggling, juggling two jobs at the time back in January and kind of taking a look at that and trying to be a mom to two children who are in our school systems, obviously it was a lot. And so when I stepped down from that other position in early February, I had talked to some folks in our Waterbury area who were excited about potentially running for school board, who I thought would be a good fit. And so I did not run until I got to the ballot and I realized we only had two people running again. And so having the capacity and obviously I think that I bring the value of being that strategic planner, I think you guys have all heard me say that a number of times, so who I've served with. I wanted to come back because I think it's, it's imperative for us right now and I'm hearing that in our community, it certainly came up in the Waterbury Select Board meeting last Monday, that we need a plan and, you know, it's a best practice on the Vermont School Board Association website. And so I still think that with the very hard decisions we need to make regardless of what is going on with the legislature right now, that we need to come together, you know, it's, it's been heartbreaking listening to obviously the emotions around the facilities and having grown up in rural Massachusetts where I had 28 kids in my eighth grade class, I can appreciate small schools and I can understand what people are afraid of. And I think that going through a process of strategic planning will help us with some of that decision-making and also prepare us for whatever is coming down from the top down in terms of the hard decisions that we have coming at us. So I have lived in Waterbury for about 20 years, as I mentioned, I have two kids in our school systems here at Crossbrook and Harwood. And I welcome the opportunity to continue serving on this board, appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Thank you. I was, we're gonna do, we're gonna have a discussion, so I'm not sure how much we need the questions right now, but we're gonna have discussion. Yeah, I know, you wanna, I like your quizzie vibes, but hitting tough. Pam and then Emily.
Hello, this is Greensworth, I think. I know some of your faces from around the Waterbury community, from soccer teams and things like that, others, I'm seeing you for the first time tonight, so. I'm Pam Eaton, I live in Waterbury, I'm an attorney in Burlington for work by trade, but I'm a mother of a second grader at Brookside Elementary School in Waterbury. I think this was in my letter of interest. It wasn't our first choice to go to the public schools in Waterbury. Initially, we sent our son Harley to Mountain River School, we were looking for something just a little different. It seemed that the schools had struggled a little bit during the pandemic and I wasn't sure that they were going to be a great fit for my son. And then Mountain River School closed, so by default, we ended up in the Brookside community last year. And I think what surprised me the most was how welcoming and kind that community was and how open the teachers were to hearing feedback. I had questions, there was someone to greet me and answer my questions. It's about every day, you can see the principals outside wearing goofy hats, dancing to music, welcoming the kids to learn. And I think that it was surprising to me, and I think that when I started thinking about why I was surprised by it, I started thinking about what I'd been reading in the news. And it felt like the community wasn't supporting our schools from the news perspective and from what I was reading. And I thought back to us not having the infrastructure pass when we asked for a bond to redo our schools. And at the time, I remember sitting in the meetings for that and hearing information that our school hadn't been updated since before we put a man on the moon. And that was shocking to me. I'm from a small town in Missouri where we had a new high school because we needed it, we built it, we funded it, and I went to a brand-new high school. So to have a school here that we're sending our kids to that hadn't been updated since, you know, the 1950s, was shocking. And so I thought that the schools weren't being supported by the community. But now that I'm in the schools, I'm seeing that that's not the problem, the problem is that we're just not communicating well with the community. And so something I think I can bring to the school board through my work as a lawyer, one of the things I do is I listen and I communicate. It's a daily basis, I process information, I communicate it, I listen to other people, and I think that I can help this board to make sure that our messaging is getting across to the community for what we're trying to do. And I think what we're trying to do is educate a generation of students to come to live in Vermont, to take over our jobs and to be in our workforce and to continue to have our communities thrive and flourish. And so I think the work on this board is essential for that and I would love to be a part of that. I don't know if I'm supposed to take questions now or go back to my seat. Okay, thank you.
Dan got a question, he got an Ellie original. Emily, could you join us at the mic, please? Emily is our rep, potential rep from Duxbury, the one and only.
Hi, I'm Emily Doloff, I live in Duxbury. I've always lived in Duxbury. Always at the same address. I went to Duxbury Elementary School. So I have, you know, history in, in town in the elementary school, I went here to Harwood. I have two daughters. My oldest went to Waitsfield Elementary and then graduated here at Harwood. My youngest went to Thatcher Brook and then Crossbrook and then for various reasons, she went to middle school here at Harwood. So I feel like I'll sort of have a unique experience that I've experienced at how the education system works in four different schools versus just having, you know, two schools and sort of seeing, you know, there, there's wonderful things about each and every school. And also, you know, a wonderful thing is that, you know, my youngest was having some social issues at Cross at Brook and being able to have the option here to be able to move her to middle school here where she has thrived socially, economically. But, you know, it's middle school. And, you know, I think one of the reasons that I think I would be good here on the board is that I'm very passionate about, you know, paying attention to things in our education system. I sort of, sort of discovered my passion last year when the school budget wasn't passing and I was getting very upset and wound up, so to speak, about people being like, no, 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 don't pass it. And I was sitting there thinking, but are you reading the information? Because I feel like so many people just focus on one little detail about something and not the bigger picture. You know, I had people coming to me asking me what my opinion was. People that lived in Duxbury but didn't have any kids, so they were looking for a perspective from, you know, a parent as they were also struggling to try to figure out, you know, what their view might be for the budget. I feel like I also have a personality that is one that can see both sides, you know, to use the term both sides of the aisle. You know, I feel like experienced that a little bit with Ashley and Dr. Mike earlier today with some communications, just trying to understand, you know, both perspectives of things, I think is really important, and I feel like that is something that I'm very good at. Even if I don't agree with an opinion, understanding the reasoning behind it and the facts behind that are just as important as whether or not you're going to be agreeing with it. Because there's two sides to every story, to every opinion, and I think that's a very important thing and is very necessary when you're trying to navigate so many things in life, whether it is personal, whether it's business, whether it's the school board, you know, whatever it is. I think that that is a, a skillset that I have that, you know, I see a lot of people honestly not really having that, so. That's my speech.
Yes, being a good listener is important here, without a doubt. Okay, so. I'm gonna say which of the jobs it is and then we're gonna seek a recommendation and then we're gonna discuss that, sorry, a nomination and then we're gonna talk about that nomination. So for the open seat number one in Waterbury, which is the one with two, it's a two-year unexpired, it's the one Dan was in before, that is the first seat, do I have a nomination? JB.
Nominate Dan the Man Rossioli.
Okay. Okay, do we have some discussion about Dan the Man Rossioli?
Is his middle name The Man? Is accepted?
Anyone have anything they would like to say in support of Dan?
I can probably speak to one thing, which is we passed a 2.75% tax, I believe, as a result of a collaboration. That was our first ever unanimous collaboration board-wide, and I believe that was brokered by Dan, which is, I think, the first time in history we had done that. So that, I think, speaks to the fact that Dan is able to sometimes see the, the way through some weeds that the rest of us kind of get ourselves caught in, which is kind of spectacular. So I think, I think I'd like to point that out.
Well said, I couldn't agree more. A few reasons, one, I have a shirt just like that that is missing, so that's one of the reasons I want to keep you around. Two, two, you were actually the only school board member that attended our facilities committee's meetings, which I thought was great. And you also had sent me some really good questions during the whole process, so I just really appreciated your input and I think you'd be a valuable member for the next couple of years.
I think it's very beneficial that stop that event. That, um, Dan has kids who have experienced, right now, who are in schools and kids who have gone through the school system and are out of the school system and at many different, like, periods of, I don't know, our journey so far, thank you. And I also, I don't know if this is, um, I also know Dan from the community and from my sister and, and he has, he's a great leader and yes.
Okay. Did we get a second? I think we need a second, okay, Rebecca seconds. All right, so we're gonna vote on Dan for seat one. It's a weighted vote. Obviously, it's not a full wait right now because we're not all here and assembled, so it's, we have eight board members. So Cindy, do you have your tally sheet up? Okay, starting with Celia.
Yes.
And Cashel.
Yes.
And Ellie.
Yeah.
And Bobby is absent. JB. Cindy. Jonathan?
Yes.
Rob? Ben?
Yes.
Rebecca? Mike Bishop?
Yes.
Steve Rosenberg?
Yes.
It's over 50%, though, so regardless of the zeros, that will pass. Welcome back, Dan, I have a binder for you. Now we're looking for the second Waterbury seat, which is a one-year unexpired seat that I think Elizabeth was in before, but it might have been Corey, I'm not really sure. But anyway, it's a one-year unexpired seat, it ends on Town Meeting Day, do I have a nomination?
Ashley, I've got my hand up.
Oh, thank you, sorry, thank you.
I'd like to nominate Pam Eaton, please.
Now we're gonna vote on that nomination. Oh yeah, discussion. Go ahead.
I, I don't know either of the candidates, but just listening to Pam, it really strikes me that she wants to do the communicating that we so desperately need and that was so on the nose that that just, I'm excited about that, so now you're on the, nevermind.
I would agree with that, too.
I, I'd just like to say that I'd see Pam around the school. Our kids have been on soccer together, she's very involved with the, the school and family and everything, so I, I agree that Pam should be nominated.
Jonathan? Is your hand just up or you have a comment?
It was still up from before, but I agree with everything, and I also like the fact that Tori, Tori is not, you know, kind of pushing her because I felt like having Tori with her legal expertise around was very helpful and I can't imagine that that would be less helpful with him, too, so that's another good reason for me to nominate her.
Thank you, Mike Bishop.
Yeah, I was just wondering, did the Town of Waterbury give an indication why she wasn't chosen? I, I was just curious, I know her, her law firm represents the Town of Waterbury, it's been paid lots of money by the Town of Waterbury, and I see she's down here with a select board member. Did, did they give any reason why they didn't appoint her originally or didn't recommend her?
He didn't get a nomination, there was a nomination, I'm sorry, she didn't get a, a vote at all. They didn't vote on her because they'd already passed two people to nominate, I mean, to recommend.
Okay, so there was no, so there was no reasons given by the select board on why they didn't choose her?
No, I don't think so, not that I have been able to, or made aware of in any way.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion anymore? Okay, then we will vote on this nomination. Got your tally? Celia.
Yes.
Cashel.
Yes.
Yes.
JB?
Yes.
Cindy? Jonathan?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Rebecca? Mike Bishop?
No.
And Steve Rosenberg?
Yes.
You have to do your zeros, I think.
For some reason, Mike's percentage isn't showing up, can you take a look at her spreadsheet? Is, is, no, it's showing the zero percentage.
It's five, it's five here.
That's his weighted, but it's not showing up, isn't that far right column? Is that far, is that far right column, I can't see. Maybe it's the left that's
It is no, it's here. Why isn't it percentage?
Sorry, it's the spreadsheet. Those are above me.
Me, too. I can get all your forums. Yeah, I have to find it, why are all your forums? Yeah, but it should come up over here. Right, to know. Sorry, those in Zoom, we're having a tech problem.
I'm trying not to be insulted, that nobody understands my legal expertise as well, just because I'm not a practicing attorney. That's why I get that out there.
I, I too would like to point out that I am not a practicing attorney at this time.
That's not a problem, but I gotta figure out what's wrong with your formula.
I'm also a damn good non-practicing attorney.
Yeah, I gotta just figure out what's wrong with my formula. Yeah, okay.
Every day I just don't get anywhere.
I'm covering attorney.
Yeah, because you're, he's zero for that, so we'll figure out what the formula is. Go ahead. Yeah, it is. This is the yeses. Yeah, that's five. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, we've got it, I gotta look at her percentages. Okay, who hasn't voted yet?
So they're not being counted in the formula? 5168, so who's not here? And you're, well, you're counted here because you have to, so right now you're count-
And you're, well, you're counted here because you have to, so right now your count, your vote is, is right. Right now you're at fifty Right. Well, you, because you don't have enough, right? You don't have, correct. Right now without your vote, you're at um, forty-six point six-five percent. Because you're taking it based on the percentages.
Oh, and, and
Bobby's not here, Cory's not here.
Um, can I just throw something out, which is to say that while we're figuring all this out behind the scenes, that we we, we would have the numbers, right? Do we not?
They are.
So, uh, just, I mean, I hate to throw this out there, but Ashley, do you wanna just throw your vote uh, one way or the other, so we know?
And vote if I see, I think I need to vote.
Which one are you on?
If I want. We're having a wonky math problem.
Well, I'm not used to apples.
It's over fifty on the left, but it's forty-six in the count.
Yeah, so
But I haven't voted in my numbers.
Right, which is this formula adjust? Let me look.
Yeah, we're gonna do that. The fifty-six percent is the hundred percent right now.
Right, cuz you take out everybody's, um, all the zeros are out, are those that are not here for their percentage.
Yeah. Alright, well, in the interest of moving this meeting along, um, I'm also gonna vote for Pam. Put me down for a one. Um, I feel that that legal presence is also important. Hits a lot of marks with me.
I know. I, hold on, I'm not used to your apple computer. So right now, without those voting members, you're at fifty-eight point eight-five percent and you're at fifty-eight point eight-five percent. Good one. This, the weight carries, this needs to be, we have to adjust this formula. But you're at fifty-eight, fifty-three point eight-five now, yeah.
Okay. With fifty-three point eight percent, that will pass. Pam, welcome to the board. Elizabeth, thank you for running again, we appreciate it. We really appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna vote on Emily Dalloff now, everyone.
Yep, yeah, she's sixty-five, yeah.
Isn't it the bottom?
No, well, that's not how the formula's set up, I need to change the formula, but right now with all those other zeros.
Um, the last port of business is for someone to make a nomination for the Ducksbury seat. Do we have a nomination?
Make that nomination?
Ben makes the nomination. JB seconds. Um, alright, we're gonna do a roll call vote, cuz that's what we do. Celia.
Yes.
Cashel, yes. Ellie.
Yes.
JB.
Really like that.
Cindy. Jonathan. Jonathan.
Sorry, yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
I can't see it now, so I'm lost. Becca. And Steve.
Yes.
And Mike Bishop.
Yes.
Okay. Of the seated board, that is unanimous. Oh, hi Bobby. We can't hear you.
Sorry, I got hung up with a medical appointment. Anyway, I'm here.
Asking you to vote yes or no on our uh, Ducksbury um, new Ducksbury rep, Emily Dalloff.
I'm definitely voting yes, and I'm so sorry I can't be there to meet everyone.
No worries, it's okay, we're good. Okay, that is unanimous. Emily, welcome to the school board.
She voted yes. So what you do is, when you wipe this out, it'll, it'll bring that hundred percent down. When you, when you zero people out that are not here, it'll bring this down. And so this is the percentage you're working off of, cuz this is what you have precedent. This is correct. Yep, so you zeroed everybody out, that's correct.
Just sit and listen and work, just do a little bit of stuff.
But that's why you're not, you're not hundred. You, if you zero them out, this is the percentage you're working with. No, without, you have to. So what happens is you wanna make sure these two add up to this. So now, when you do this, this is fifty-eight point eight-five percent, and that's the percentage you're working off of.
Okay, I did make a critical error because I am prone to doing that sometimes and I did not approve, uh, look for a motion to approve the agenda, so can I have, oh, actually, we're gonna amend the agenda a little bit, so can I have an emotion to amend the agenda?
Motion to amend the agenda?
And from Steve, the amendment is this. You wanna, it's Steve's amendment, so we're gonna, what we, so turn that off for a second. Let me just say it. Um, we're amending the agenda to add Rebecca to the Public Outreach Committee and to add a non-voting member, Shannon Dunphy. Know her, she's been at some of our meetings. She's um, somebody who knows a lot about outreach, a lot like Asher Berg, who is another person who's kind of working with the board. We'll all get to know them better, they're gonna set a pu- uh, set their first meeting, so the amendment is to add Rebecca and Shannon to the board, to the committee, sorry, and a date. Oh, and Bobby, I thought we already did, Bobby's already on there, I thought. Yeah, should we put Bobby on? Bobby, Asher, and you to start, yeah, Bobby's already on there. Okay, so um, can I have a motion to make that amendment? We've done that. You're making it, okay. You're seconding it.
Amend the agenda.
Amend the agenda. Agenda to
Add Rebecca Baruzzi.
I was just gonna say add member, oh Rebecca. Yeah.
And
What's Rebecca's last name?
B A R U Z Z I.
Yeah, okay.
And as a, she's our, she's a board member, but then, and Shannon Dunphy Ball. Dunphy, D U N F U Y hyphen, hyphen Ball. As a non-voting member.
So that's bad ball, bad thing. B A L L, yep.
Dan, it's like you never left. JB's gonna try to steal it on you.
Is he still trying to be the legal person? There. Got it now, amended, amended agenda to add Rebecca.
To Public Outreach.
To Public Outreach, that's important. Committee.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, um, do we have any um, opposition to that amendment? Do we have any abstentions or no votes to that? Not seeing any or hearing any. The amended agenda. Okay, now that's right, now, now we're gonna pass the agenda. Can I get a motion to pass the agenda?
Right.
About that. I'm s- no. Do we have a motion to, JB makes a motion to accept the agenda with the amendment? Steve seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on with this agenda. Sorry about that, I was a little rattled by all the new things. Uh, before we get going, I just wanted to mention, we had a, a sad loss at Brookside School today. Um, Steve Wilson, Will- uh, Willis, who is a para educator there for a very long time and at Harwood and is known throughout the district for his infinite patience, passed away last night in his sleep at home, so it's very sad and we're just really wanna send our um, feelings out to his family and to everyone at Brookside who I'm sure is missing him, am I right, Mandy? It's pretty sad, um, you know, he's a, he's my, he was my neighbor, I, I've known him, so I just wanted to mention it because, you know, we have a pretty small community and it's a bummer. It's really sad, okay. Um, okay, so we've done the first piece of this, now we're gonna hear from the students.
We're back. Yep, but let me just tell you guys, vacation is less than three days away. It's two days away, actually. Less than, less than three days away, yep, and the whole school's feeling it. The energy is at an all-time low. Um, no, like, I'm serious, like, you know vacation is coming up, um, but we got some sports highlights going on. All spring sports are started, full swing. Our girls lacrosse had their first game yesterday.
Wow.
Yep, I think, I think they won. They lost. In our, it's, they won. Boys lacrosse had a game and won today, and won today, wait, yesterday. Boys lacrosse also had a game and won yesterday. Twelve zero. Yeah, that's an old-fashioned thrashing. We also um, our, our track and field team is having our second meet tomorrow at VHS. It's gonna be really competitive, you guys. Nine schools are going. We are among the best D1 schools in the state right now.
Wow.
No, like tomorrow, we're competing against, definitely not. We're competing against the same schools tomorrow, um, and it's gonna be great. Yes, Cashel. We're in D2, Cashel. No one knows. It depends for each sport, you know, like, I think track and field for D2, we're not very high, middle, middle area. Yeah, but our soccer teams, you, you know where they lie, they're pretty much, so like, we're, we're pretty chill, um. Tennis is coming along great. Tennis tennis, my sister's in tennis, yesterday they had a match. Guys, they beat all seven games, seven zero. All, they clinched all seven games. Even the unranked ones, clinched them. Yes, tennis is on fire. Tennis is on fire, you guys, um. Baseball and softball have also started, they are practicing, getting in shape. They haven't had any games yet, probably because it's ab- have you seen outside right now? I don't know, it's like, yeah, it's like winter right now. Um, okay, now to Celia or Cashel, whoever wants to go first.
Okay, I'm giving an update on all of the trips, the trips that are going on right now. So the Denmark trip, they left last Monday and they're flying back today. Which, it seemed really awesome, they stayed with host families, everything. Grady is on that trip, the other school board rep. Um The French trip, going to Normandy, staying with host families there and then going to Paris, left yesterday morning. And then the Spain trip, going to Barcelona and Madrid, is leaving tomorrow.
Wow. Wow.
So I'll give a little prom update and um, also the applications for being a new board rep, I'm kinda doing that cuz Grady's in, in Europe. Um, so prom, we're planning it, my junior class council that I'm president of is trying to get that going. We have little committees and we're working things out. Um, it's gonna be at Stowe, I think we've said this already.
You're minded.
Oh yeah, the theme is Great Gatsby, they picked that one. I, I think it'll be I don't know what that'll look like, but I think we'll, we'll try to get like masks there, um. Sorry, this is last section. Yeah, chaperones, actually, I'll email you. No, email me.
Okay. He's a busy man, just email him. Let me be a chaperone, she wouldn't even let me link. Yeah, I'm gonna get my people with your people, we'll get back.
Great, great. Yeah, Grady helps out. Um, spirit challenge for our next assembly, um, we were driving around in the hall with tricycles today, cuz we're gonna do a little tricycle race. We need four, we only have two.
Oh.
So, tricycles, let me know.
Don't have any.
Yep, and for the applications for a new board rep, we have two currently. I got a little ahead of myself and made the deadline today. But we're back, so hopefully we'll get some, some more choice.
Some good people, something good, they're enthusiastic?
Yeah, we'll see. Looking forward to the interviews and we'll, we'll come back with
Okay.
I, well, I can tell that I'm joking around.
Exactly, we do that here.
I think that's it.
Cashel, hey Cashel, how big of a tricycle do you need? Like, I have a five-year-old kid, tricycles.
I mean, we'll take what we can get, honestly, cuz there's some, one of our two, like, didn't even move until we extremely lubricated it. And then the other one, you can't even get your feet down and you just have to scoot, so.
You just scoot it.
It basically, at least one wheel.
Let me see, I'll talk, I have, you know, all these grandchildren.
Okay, great.
Play tricycle, so.
Great.
I'll see what I can do.
Thank you, yeah.
Well, thank you for your work on getting us some future applicants when our senior girls go away. The sassiest senior girl I think we've ever had that I've been on this board. It's pretty, we're gonna miss you. No, you. Dan has a question.
Turn the favor. Between Spain, France, Rwanda, Denmark, India, what percentage of our students get a chance to go abroad at some point?
Big question, Dan, thank you. Um Basically, um, I mean, the Spain and France trips are reserved specifically for kids who take Spanish and French. So that's definitely for those kids, whereas India, Rwanda are two trips that anyone can apply sophomore through um, senior year. Um, so, I mean, that's to anyone. Financially, these trips do have to be paid for, there are scholarship opportunities. Um, there's like, our school does some funding and scholarship. Um, but I feel like for at least India and Rwanda, there, it's for anyone who wants to apply. Um, Denmark is also specifically for a class. And then any other trips?
For the percentage, I would say I know like forty-five students in our grade out of like a hundred and twenty who have gone on one of these trips. So yeah, whatever.
Or, or more, or more important, you know, many kids who have not been able to go because trips were filled or there weren't trips available?
I have never at least for my two years that I went, there weren't any kids who were unable to go because of um like, the trips being too full. Most, um, reasons that I've heard that people decide not to go are sports-related. So a lot of the trips happen during some, really, like, some, during playoffs, to be specific. And, um, there are a lot of people who decide to, you know, go, if your team's going to playoffs, I mean, they wanna play, so they decide not to go on trips.
So have membership from the student body to be on this board, um, are there any requirements? Like, can it be somebody from, can it be a sophomore? Does it have to be a junior or a senior? Can it be somebody from H C L C, can it be somebody from the tech school?
On through this process last year, she could probably add on, but, um, you have to be a rising junior. This is reserved for juniors and seniors, and I, you have to, I, you can talk about the H C L C stuff.
I don't know actually specifics on, um, like, the technical school and H E, H C L C. There was actually a student last year who applied, who was from H C L C, they just, I mean, didn't, like, make it to an interview, and like, it, they didn't end up being chosen, but, I mean, they applied and that went through and everything, and that process kept going, I mean, I'm gonna say most likely, since they're still part of the district and they still, you know, do whatever, I mean, participate. Um, but we haven't, I, um, my, the past two seniors with me, Dylan and Naomi, they didn't have anyone apply from H C L C or the tech school either, so I don't think it's very common for those students to apply, just since we have such a big student body here.
Are there requirements, is it like a certain GPA besides rising?
No, there is no GPA requirement. Basically, what happens is there are two seats reserved for juniors and two seats reserved for seniors, and the rising seniors pick the incoming juniors. So what happens, and what Cashel did and what I did last year, is we sent out a form to all the rising juniors, cuz that's the two seats we need to fill, and we select our own questions, like Cashel selected his own questions, and I had done my own questions. Um, but basically, like, what do you want to know about these students, and then once you get that, you pull them into an interview about like, kind of related to the same questions, just verbal, it's verbal. And, um, Meg, our principal, sat down with me and interviewed the kids. Sometimes Dr. Mike gets involved, I don't know, yeah, sometimes. I don't know, not much last year, I don't remember that much. Um, but you know, there's definitely like, a process and the, there, people are chosen, but to be honest, last year I got five applicants and I had to pick three, so it was like, we don't get many applicants at all, and that's one thing that at least we're hoping, people, more people will apply, but I've heard a lot of talk about people applying. We haven't seen many people apply yet, so.
I, I think we would be open to having an H C L C student or a Career Center student on this group, for sure, I mean, why not more broaden the rep? We love that, especially, I mean, eight, eight, the Career Center, you know, has its own board, so there could be opportunities there as well, but, um, but here at our table certainly, and H C L C is right over there, so I, I, I would promote if there was someone interested, maybe float it to them, if you can, if you haven't yet. Take a minute, you only have two applicants, see if anybody over there is interested, I, I would be interested to know if they were. Um, okay. Uh, any other, oh, I see Bobby's hand up, go ahead, Bobby.
Now I'm trying to think of what I was, well, I think, um, I, I, I like that idea, opening it up and, uh, and trying to recruit more people, like, five applicants isn't too terrible. Um, you know, because there are lots of things that kids are doing, so if you get five serious applicants, and that would be great. Um, but I just, um, wondered, uh, if you would want school board members to be present. At one point, that was something that was done, that we were invited, and we, not that we could all make it, but, uh, if I knew the date that you're interviewing and, you know, and can make it, I'd like to be part of that.
We can talk about that. It's kind of a process so far that the students and the admin work together on it and deliver us our reps, so that it's not really influenced by us, I think is part of it, but, you know, we can certainly talk about that, can do that. So maybe we could do that, Bobby, so when we get to interviews?
I'm just thinking if I was a sophomore and then I walk into a room and it's the principal and a board member and someone all staring at me.
Be like, oh, yay.
But I don't know, you can see how they do under pressure.
Yeah, exactly, how are you gonna do under pressure? Cause there's so much pressure at this table.
No, Bobby, what we are trying to do this year, which, of course, Cashel's trying to do this year, um, is we're trying to get, um, due to, I mean, we tried to make the deadline, he tried, he tried to make the deadline today. Uh, we're extending it, but what we're hoping is that these new board reps, potential board reps, come to at least two meetings or view a meeting and then sit at a meeting before the school year ends. So they do get some, like, meet you guys and do get some experience in before next year. So, the word, we are hoping that, so you don't just like show up and there are just two random kids, make sure.
Yeah, nobody random. Can you, so why don't we talk about that, when you figure out your next process, we'll, we can involve Bobby and we can connect over that. Okay, all right. Um, anything else from you kids? You, you kids, any questions for the kids? She's muted, okay, all right, um. My, our leadership res- report was self-explanatory, it was simply about the process for this evening, more or less, so I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Mike.
I include report, happy to take questions on that, anything else, but just a couple of things I wanted to comment on. Uh, I, I did put in my last message newsletter to the community and to our families that were looking at Wednesday, June eighteenth is our last day. Uh, Moretown had two days that, two days they were not able to be in school and the rest of the school, what, rest of the district was in session at the beginning of the school year due to the flooding, building wasn't ready. And Crossbrook had their, uh, days last month, so I did uh, apply to the state, to the Secretary of Education for an exception for those two incidents, but the rest, uh, they would complete their one hundred and seventy-five day requirement. Uh, I did wanna point out some information that we've been updating school websites and bringing them up to date, but please take a look if you have not at our district website page. Uh, there's a great picture, Ellie talked about Anything Goes, there's a great picture on the homepage now of, uh, Anything Goes. Oh, you didn't see that yet. Cindy, can you pull up a web browser, just type, type in H U U S D dot org? And it's thanks to our wonderful photographer who works with the Waterbury Roundabout, who shared them with. It was not intentional, Ellie. Then you have to share. Yes. There we go. There it is, isn't that a great picture? Not, not in that scene.
Terrific.
But that was taken by Gordon Miller, who does a great job taking pictures. And, uh, the last thing I had on there is we are working, we have, uh, our, our former board members, Tori and Danielle did a wonderful job of helping to update all of our policies, and there are a couple of, uh, updates from the School Board Association, so we will bring those to the full board here in the near future. So happy to take any other questions.
So now that this H four fifty-four has passed, and, uh, do you have any sense of what the Senate's gonna do to it?
No idea, other than that I'm sure we'll see. Uh, i- if they pass it and there's significant changes, then they'd have to have a conference committee to kind of reconcile go to the governor, so I just, I think we're in for a very long May, June, um, so, so, just, I, that, had any sense of what that's gonna look like, Cashel and I. Still have a charge, the way that the, um, the way that the House wrote four fifty-four, uh, the, the, the group that would draw up the, uh, new districts and propose three, uh, up to three options to the legislature would be of the commission, a non-voting subcommittee, uh, but that, but we are moving ahead, we formed new committees, uh, that start to, that we started to work at our last meeting, our last meeting was held at, uh, South Burlington, we're still and due to that piece, I, I, I was appointed to the school governance committee, so, so we're working, you know, Representative Conlins on that group, uh, myself, uh, two other commission members, so we'll still be kind of diving into our work and developing a report that if you read four fifty-four, we ask for some revisions to the charge, the charge was really just too global before, uh, so we'll continue to meet through, uh, next December.
Would like to suggest a policy, is that an agenda item, or how would we go about that? And in particular, I'm thinking about maybe a policy on how to address A I in education?
Um, good question, that is an agenda item, so yeah, we can, once you're sworn in, send us an email and we'll, we'll work that in. Bear in mind that we have three weeks off, we're gonna, we have vacation and then we meet on the fourteenth, the twenty-eighth, and then I believe it's one more, and then we have a retreat. So, we were talking today that we don't actually have a plan for the retreat, if everyone remembers, last year we were really in high budget mode by then, we were like, all like, and all we were talking about was money and it was really stressful, so, and we're looking for some input on what people wanna talk about, and what do we wanna learn about, and what would be a good use of our time for that retreat, so if anybody has feelings about that, please email us, Cashel.
And what did that look like last year, like, did we go somewhere?
Go to the Mad River Barn, and we gather at five thirty, and we have dinner, and we chat, and we kind of get to know each other, because there's new people generally, and then we, um, kind of, you know, it's, it's, the charges for the board leadership to sort of lay it out, but we're, this board is such a unit that I feel like I, I'm more curious wh- what we, now that we're not in that flurry about budget, can we slow it down and talk about A I, or can we talk about other things that we know are gonna affect us, so? It's actually a kind of a cool event, and, um, if we are prepared, we could really, I think, use the time well, so. Have that in your thought process, we're looking for input.
I think when, when Ashley and I were talking about, we were saying that the, that the purpose for the, um, retreat is in fact for the board to develop kind of their plan for what they're gonna focus on in the coming year, and perhaps? Uh, now, there's no rule about that, that's just the ones that I've been to for five years, um, that, it, that, that's one of the things we were kind of looking at, is there, is there an area that we would really like to plan so that we direct some of our work through the year to try and address that? And, and obviously, last year, it wa- might not have been specific, but we were talking finance and budget, for sure, um, and I guess we could do that again, but, whatever, but whatever, there's a lot of, we do a lot more than just finance and budget on this board, and if you can think about some of the things, new things in education, new things coming up in education, A I being one of those new things, essentially. We also are, uh, developing our schools to how they operate with no cell phones, um, with the way we're managing technology in education, you know, using technology in classes, but maybe not as a social event, whatever. I, that, that's the kind of thing, if you just open our brains a little bit and think about what you'd be interested in. Ashley and I would really like to, uh, hear from you guys. Yeah, Emily.
Just one comment, strategic planning has come up, you know, the, the idea of having a three to five-year plan? That could also be thought of for that event, you know, we could be talking about that as future work, Emily?
How long is, like, the time slot for this, cuz is this like a two-hour or an eight-hour?
The, I think we wind about, we have dessert around eight-thirty, it's very casual, we don't actually, like, you know, I mean, well, it, 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 it's, it's great, but it's not, it's not super intense, it's, you know, it's really no minutes, it's actually not public, I mean, I think we video it, sorry, it is public, but we don't, we don't have an agenda, you know, it's very just, it's, it's, it's just a retreat, so it's a little different. But, so it's five thirty to eight thirty, nine-ish? Questions for Dr. Mike? No, okay. So, we have two action items now, cuz we've added the piece about adding Rebecca and Shannon, that's now, we've gotta vote on that. But we also wanna set a date for the board orientation for our newest members. I, I'm not sure if Dan's gonna, are you thinking you're gonna attend, maybe? You, okay. Yeah. So we've got Rob and Emily and Pam, um, we, we need, and Rebecca, sorry, sorry, and, and Rebecca, my bad. She's not a lawyer, but she still wants in on that orientation. Okay, so we need a date, um, that's in common for all of you, that works for me and Cindy and Mike, basically, and Lisa, because we all kind of participated in that. Right. Yeah, let me introduce, this is Mandy Keterier, she is the M T S S Multi-Tier Support Systems Director for our district, and she does a lot of that sort of, um, helping you to understand, and we're missing a few people, but you'll meet them. And that's Lisa Essler, our CFO, she's the money. The money, okay.
Do, do they have to come to the treat as well, because I think we should make them?
We are making them, this coming, everyone has to come, it's really fun. Yes, and it's actually really yummy food, they do a nice job, I, I have felt they did a really nice job with the food. Yeah, so, um, so, setting that board, that time, do, do we have a common night off? Does everyone, are, does anyone have booked nights? Not our school board Wednesdays, cuz we don't have a meeting for the next three weeks, so we could push this out to the beginning of May. Yes, this is just the orientation for these four new board members. Tuesdays are bad for you? Okay, Tuesdays are bad for Rob. What about Mondays? Monday night, okay, Mondays, potentially, a Monday night? Okay. We're definitely gonna send out reminders, and we will do it in Zoom, so you can just sit at home, just for information, very obvious. This is, so, so retreat versus the orientation. Yeah, the orientation is basically, we will answer your questions and we will tell you basically about our process, and there's materials from the Vermont School Board Association, there's a lot of stuff, and we'll kind of review everybody's job and how we go about things, cuz there are some specific, like, the ways we, the way we interact with these teenagers is very specific, it's done through the school, there's, there's layers of the system, so we're gonna help get you started on that, but that may not be enough, you, if you have questions, you can ask your fellow board members, um, you can ask us, you can ask Dr. Mike. You know, there's plenty of places to get the information, don't think any question is dumb, because it is not. Monday, May twelfth, that sounds good to me, how do people feel about Monday, May twelfth? Perhaps at like six thirty? Okay? Five, twelve, Rebecca, Rob, yep, okay. Becca and Rob and Pam, and how about you, Emily, does that potentially work for you? Okay. The date is now set for six thirty in Zoom. The date is now set for six-thirty in Zoom, May twelfth, for new board member orientation. Dr. Mike will send out a link and then you just join through that in regular Zoom world. Six-thirty? Yeah. You do, you have to do everything I do, remember? That was the deal. Okay, Steve, would you like to read Cindy's motion? Because the next thing, you, you're gonna bring up the motion to add Rebecca. You have to share it on the screen, share it, and then we're gonna vote. Or we'll just vote. You can do it. Okay, wow, like a pro. Okay, that's the first one, now we need the second one. Yeah, we've done, we've, um, all, um, do we have a motion to accept the meeting for the orientation?
I saw motion.
Second? Second, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, that motion, that will carry. So, last is the... And then your next tally sheet is the one that says the thing about adding, yep, that just passed. The one about correct. We didn't, we just wrote it. Okay, um, Steve, do you want to make this motion, since it's for your committee?
We appreciated somebody else who can read it.
Okay.
Make the motion.
Now it's gone, I can't see. Can you back it down? There it is. Go ahead, JB.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to add Rebecca Beruzzi and Shannon Dunphy-Ball, as a non-voting member on the Public Outreach Committee.
Now, we're just, we're making a motion to add them. We're not at doing it, amending the agenda, that was the first motion. Just pull out, just pull out amend the agenda, add, and just start, and we'll... Go ahead.
So, we just nominated somebody to the board who's got all sorts of value to add in community outreach. Is that just a conversation we have later?
It is.
Okay.
Be patient, thank you, that's all it is. Yeah. She wants you, you can tell, she's like, come on. No, we're, we're working, there are other people have interests in other committees. We're just gonna ramp up gently, because we have a three-week break right now. That's what's gonna happen, we have a week off for vacation and then we have two weeks before our next meeting. That's why we have these double meetings, because of the appointment process, it got a little weird. But when we come back, we'll be sort of beginning our work again, in theory. So, that would be a time we could talk about that. Okay. JB, read that motion, please.
Make a motion to add Rebecca Beruzzi and Shannon Dunphy-Ball as a non-voting member to the Public Outreach Committee.
Do I have a second? Rob, a second. Do all those in favor say aye? Aye. Do we have any no votes or abstentions? Not seeing any or hearing any, that will pass. And just for clarity, guys, um, there, this Public Outreach Committee is, as, as I'm sure you have noticed from watching our meetings, a very important piece of what we are doing. And we need to get better and better at that. And Steve's been doing a great job and we are adding people who, to create the, the non-voting members we're talking about, Shannon Dunphy-Ball and Asher Berg, who are members of the community. They won't vote at this table, committees don't vote on anything. They bring information back to the board. But, they have expertise that is going to help us accomplish these goals. And the goal is to keep people really well-informed and keep getting feedback and keep hearing from people. So, um, stay tuned. Okay. The last part of our agenda is the consent agenda. This is a, a piece where we lump together things that are, things that's just doing school business. We're gonna approve the minutes from the four-nine meeting. We're gonna approve the warrant from the four-nine meeting, which was five hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. And we're also gonna approve the Harvard Union High School trip to India in November of twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion to pass the consent agenda? Rebecca makes the motion, do I have a second? Second, honorary second from my buddy Ellie, and second from JB. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Any no, no votes or abstentions? Mike Bishop?
Was there a discussion on this? I didn't, I didn't hear you say discussion.
Some, go for it. Question on the trip?
Yeah, just, I'm, I'm just concerned about that trip. I, are they, is someone watching the world, uh, and is gonna report back if they're not going? Should we put something in there? Is it too soon to be approving this? I guess I'd ask Dr. Mike this question.
The board guidelines is, or for the board, a trip like this international to be approved the year before. So, just our regular protocol, uh, the high school principal, myself and the sponsor, touch base about the safety of it at the time. If you remember, this year, uh, we were supposed to go to Rwanda and, uh, we met as a team back in September and made the decision to cancel that because of, uh, concerns with illness. So, so we do monitor that, we have procedures in place. And, uh, we will do the same with this as we would with any other trip.
Thanks.
Add a motion, we have a second. Do we have any abstentions or no votes? None? All those in favor say aye? Aye. All right, that also will pass. Okay, the very last motion is, would someone like to make a motion? Yeah? Yeah? Rebecca makes a motion to adjourn. I know, it's early, you're wealthy. Hey, he wants to stay here all night. All right, motion to adjourn, has a second, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, thank you, new board members, we really appreciate you.